Hello.
Oh, stop it. It's Tuesday. One, no más.
Four maybe?
Oh, my goodness. That's the kind of life you're living, huh? Listen, I would not judge.
That's what I need, but I won't be able to do that.
I will not judge. No. I would never do that.
I need it, but I won't do it.
She's giving up, um, you know, just, just, uh, so she's always, uh, entertaining. I just text her, I like, I just want to see it. Oh, they're not excited. No, and this is the weirdest year, year in seven years, like, seven years since we've never found a squad. I mean, Eric.
Yeah.
I think they're fine. Godfather stuff.
She's too new. She's too new.
Construction failed.
Failed.
Brooke, how are you?
Pressure family.
I'm okay. How are you?
I don't have, like, this is, is the one.
Very busy. Yes, I saw who, who, from whom. We'll be discussing what to do about honoring the sports teams. When Vince comes back, we'll see what he says again.
Okay, this is right in my eyeball.
What is it? Is that what it is? A letter? Very, very pretty. It's very, uh, in- interesting.
I gotta open mine now. Now I'm all curious. Ooh, I feel like they're wetters. Just like the sword.
Give it to the kids at Edgar. Very, very. So, so the.
I think what he said is.
Well, it's two choices. It's either call them all at once, or call them up by teams. There's twelve different teams there. The low reads and the high reads and, you know, the base drums and sting drums. There's twelve different groups on the agenda, just by their section.
Awesome.
All right, now, real quick.
Pick out real quick. Jennifer, Jennifer. I don't understand the text. I don't understand. I don't understand.
Like that. Just like that. Too fast. Where's she going to college? Is she going to college? You took. College figured out yet? No, I know. We'll be there. We're going to GW in January because they, Dayton, where I went, is playing basketball at GW, so we're going to the game.
That's where she goes.
Oh, all right. Well, she should go to Dayton instead. Oh, good for her. Oh, I love that. I love that. I love that. Oh, it's so. Because they're expensive.
It should be a TV show.
It's crazy.
I got it. Thank you very much.
She'll be able to put you in a nice nursing home now. That's what we're doing it for. We're doing it for the end game. Pick something nice.
I only heard the end of that. I was like, what?
I tell Kate all the time. I'm like, I'm like, listen, you're expensive, but I'm doing this so I get prime nursing home.
But she's the big one, so she'll make the decisions.
I know. Uh, you don't think I don't know that? She gets the nicest stuff.
Right? You're like, this is why.
Listen, you gotta focus on the end game.
That's real talk.
Life coaching right here. Are you open tears already?
So, yes, so we'll fill them off by section.
Okay, all right. Good evening. This is the Matuchin Board of Education meeting for Tuesday, December tenth, twenty twenty-four. Would you all rise to the flag salute please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Notice of meeting please.
I hereby make this statement to indicate compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act known as Chapter Two Three One of the Public Laws of New Jersey, nineteen seventy-five, which became effective ninety days after enactment, January nineteenth, nineteen seventy-six. Notice of this meeting was given by providing the location, time, and date of this meeting, and posting the same on the front door of the Board of Education offices by delivering copies to the Borough Hall and the Matuchin Public Library, the Home News and Tribune, and by filing a copy with the Borough Clerk as prescribed by this law.
Thank you. Vocal please.
Mr. Bott.
Here.
Ms. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Derflinger.
Here.
Mr. Glassberg.
Here.
Dr. Johnson Marcus.
Here.
Ms. Colleen.
Here.
Mr. Lifton.
Here.
Ms. Thresha.
Here.
Dr. Spigner.
Here.
Mr. Suss.
Here.
Thank you. Dr. Caputo, we have quite a few guests.
Full house tonight. Very exciting. Um, tonight first, to start us off, it's always wonderful to start off with some of our outstanding musicians. We have Mr. Messenger and the MHS Jazz Ensemble behind us. So, we're excited. Yeah, yeah, let them have. We are really excited to welcome the, um, Touchin High School Jazz Ensemble to us, uh, to the board meeting tonight. The ensemble will feature Sammy Nistico's arrangement of Jingle Bells at their upcoming winter concert. The concert will also showcase the MHS Jazz Band and the MHS Concert Band. And that will take place tomorrow night, seven o'clock. We invite everyone to join us in supporting these very talented students as they continue to make our community proud. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Messenger. Thank you, John, for being here.
Well, thank you. It was wonderful. Um, the, the performance is.
Tomorrow night, seven o'clock, right here.
Right here. Tickets.
Tickets available.
Tickets available. Well, it was just wonderful. Thank you so much for coming tonight and sharing it with us.
So, um, I, Mr., first of all, Mr. Messenger, I proclaim the band concert-ready with that performance. Thank you. Secondly, we often give you a few minutes to clear. If you would stay put, if everyone could stay. Um, a number of your students are going to be involved with the next presentation, um, as part of our showcase success for the, the sports season, which the marching band has some nice honors.
Excellent. So, uh, transitioning, if I may. Please.
Mr. Lifton to the next part. So, thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. Um, again, come see the jazz band tomorrow. Um, we celebrate tonight, the, as a night of champions, our, our fall season champions. We have several teams and individuals, uh, that are here tonight with their coaches. Um, Mr. Cathcart will be taking the sports teams, but first on our agenda is the marching band. So, I'll let Mr. Messenger introduce the championship that they won, why they're being recognized tonight, the night of champions. Um, and then we can recognize by section what we're going to do tonight, Mr. Messenger, because you have so many. We'll recognize by section.
Sure.
If they have their certificates already, they, they'll, uh, mass on the, um, the right side. They'll come up on stage, whether it's a whole fifteen in one section or three in another section, photo op with their certificates. Uh, folks, uh, if you haven't gotten your certificate yet, that I think either Mrs. Aliyevich has them or Mr. Messenger has them. That's great. So, you can see Mr. Messenger after. For those folks not here tonight, we, we have those and we can get those to you, uh, before the end of the week at school. Is that sound a plan?
Sounds great.
All right. Thank you.
Um, so thank you for having us here tonight. Um, marching band had a really successful season. Uh, tonight, we're being recognized as the Tournament of Bands Chapter Seven Four Open Champion. Um, that's a state championship. We also were a Bands of America, which is a, a national, uh, regional, the New Jersey Regional. We were Class A champions for that. Our first year ever. That was at Rutgers University. Really exciting night, uh, for us because we got to perform twice in prelims and we made finals. Um, so that was a, getting to perform at Rutgers twice in one day was, was really, really exciting for all of us. So, um, we're going to have all the kids come up and we have our, our two championship banners. So, kids, when I call your name, just come up on stage and then I'll give you your certificates, uh, after, right? So, I have all of them in front of me and then we'll, we'll get going. Ready? Here we go. Starting with the flutes it looks like. Ready? Jackson Cruz, Angela Ho, Abigail Hogan. When you hear your name, go right on stage. Mirabella Ham, Moira Huang, Violet Osborne Jones, Bella Stahl, Nathaniel Villanueva, Ashley Chen. Oh, we're on to the clarinets. Ashley Chen, Daniel Choi, Ada Dolan, Amira El Said, Emma Huber, Neela Myers, Anushree Satar, Daniel Afghami. Uh, on to the saxophones. Ian Saha, Ishan Sarkar, Sarah Huck, Eileen He, Elie Man Kusoge, Kiko Lee, uh, Shinoski Marrero, Ryan Stein, uh, Shin, uh, Shion Wang, Victoria Zenecki, Melody Zatino, Caleb Hahn, uh, Habib Kusoge, Harshith Passam, Daniel Ruiz, and Nicholas Timko. Now, we're on to the trumpets. Tarek Ali Salmon, Sean Blaze, Julia Diaz, Julia Del Finino, Alastair Fawcett, Elizabeth Feynman, uh, Connor Gawn, Jackson Gould, Aiden McPherson, uh, Barnav Mitra, uh, Ariana Samemi, Laura Tso.
Mr. Messenger, I'm excited for the melophones next. Can we get the first group up there?
Sure.
Photo op at the first group.
Yeah.
Recognize them so there's room. Otherwise, the other folks won't get on stage.
Yeah. Um, so why don't we, uh, why don't we come up, squish together, and why don't we have a picture with, uh, all of our first third of the band?
Flutes through trumpets, yep.
Flutes through the trumpets. There you go. And Claire's just going to bring up the banners real quick.
Oh, very nice. We have some championship banners.
Absolutely.
I remember that from, I'm glad we have those. I was going to ask you. Nice.
There we go.
Wow, that's awesome.
All right. If you guys want to have a seat or meet me in the band room and keep the banners up there for the melophones through the color guard, ready?
Mr. Messenger, as we're just letting them come off, that'd be great. I played the French horn, so I'm excited with the French horn on the banner.
That's amazing.
And as we're switching groups here, they can come down. Where will the banners, in case we want to see them, where will the banners be, uh, displayed?
Um, we're going to have them hanging up in the, in the band room.
Excellent.
All right. Here comes the, the marching French horns, the melophones. Ready? Allison Chan, Nick Casenza, Ethan Delagarza, Gianna Hernandez, and then Low Brass, Johannes Stahl, Nate Borat, Avner Chaplin, Nell Massey, Sid Nike, who just made region band. Congratulations, Sid.
Yeah.
Uh, Nick, Nicholas Ruder, Gage Roddy, Bowen Zhang, Chamber Lamb, who also made region band, uh, Jonah Lopez, uh, Rose Michaels Lamorte, Oliver Sider. Um, here's the drum line. Maddie Cook, Peter Kreshe, Milo Haviland, Emma Hogan, Prakat Ja, Art Crumens, uh, John V. Malik, Riva Nagvkar, Aiden Ogborne, Ripley Wong, Alan Zhang. Uh, front ensemble, Jackson Blaze, Katie Donahue, Eli Doomey, Josh Feldman, uh, Shailen Gandhi, Alex Ho, Lindsay Kang, Peter Kukaraza, Emily Lantern, Carmen D. Lee, Gavin Mormon, Taj Naresch, Ronan Sequera, Daniel Stone. And then the color guard, Jocelyn Brance, Faith Cordova, Evie Han, one of our guard captains, uh, Benny Harrington, Zora Haviland, Reni He, Yu Ting He. I'm almost there. I promise. Uh, Adrian Lee, Melinda Lee, uh, Lulu Lin, Nick McCarr, Cece Ing, uh, Gwen Osman, Brianna Perez, Caleb Rittsdorf, another one of our guard captains. And that is the second half of the old marching. Thank you, guys, so much, and thank you for, uh, having us here tonight and recognizing our accomplishments. We appreciate it. We'll see you at the concert tomorrow night?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Messenger. Thank you, being.
Thank you.
Mr. Messenger, since the excitement is, is rolling, is it all right if the jazz band just hangs for the sports awards? Rather than, and then you can clear out. We'll take a break for everybody. Awesome. Jazz band, thanks for hanging in there just for another minute or so. Or unless you, you have your stuff, you're gone? All right, bye. See you.
They're gone.
I know. I need to get better at this to figure out, like, logistics.
Best, best slate plans.
Yeah.
Mr. Cathcart, I want to keep the momentum going, so how about coming up to the podium? Because this is not the break. We'll do a formal break after the rest of the awards. So, let's get rolling with the, the next part. Good excitement tonight.
If everyone, if the people who are leaving would at least try and be quiet because when, this isn't the normal break in the, in the program. We have a, a number of more people to honor, students who did wonderful things in the athletic area. So, if, we'd like you all to stay, but if you're leaving, just if you could please be, be quiet. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to introduce the rest of the school now. Uh, first of all, I'd like to congratulate the band, too. I mean, they do a great job, especially, uh, at all of our football games. It's a huge, huge spirit lift for all of us. So, congratulations to you guys and thank you for always being there during our week of lights. You can't, I can't even tell you how much that means to all of us. Uh, first, our up will be our girls soccer team. Uh, our head coach, Mike Noth, who was the white division champion, or, excuse me, white coach of the year, uh, and also, uh, white division champion for the team. I'll have him come up and ladies. Yeah, we're going to do Plan D, so now we're going on stage. Okay. We've gone through four stages already, so. Coach, it's all yours. Welcome, Coach.
Uh, thank you, uh, Dr. Caputo and members of the Board of Education for, uh, honoring our girls tonight. Uh, the ladies had a, uh, very successful season this year. They finished the year with eighteen wins, five losses, and one tie. Uh, they went eleven and one in the white division and won the division title. Went to the sectional final this year. Unfortunately, we didn't make it through the section, but, uh, very good year for our girls. I'd like to, uh, recognize them, uh, now. Uh, please step forward when, uh, your name is called. Sarah Hyman, Caitlin Connors, Julia Chinchar, Kylie Tralano, Juliana Castellanos, Leah Honig, Lucy Palota, Victoria Zanyeki, Catherine Moreno, Grace Van Lewen, Rose Surgeon, Julia Hajar, Olivia Barry, Charlotte Murphy, Samantha Powers, McKenna Brunz, Maria Dafino, Isabella Benegas, and Emma Ballantyne. We did have some, uh, young ladies this year who received postseason honors. I'd like to recognize them at this time, too. If Sarah Hyman and Caitlin Connors could step forward, both of them made all GMC this year. They were in the top eighteen players in Middlesex County. In addition, both girls made all white division, and both girls will be recognized in January at the, uh, New Jersey All-State, uh, banquet at the Pines Manor. So, congratulations to them. In addition to them, would Kylie Tralano step forward? Kylie also earned New Jersey Girls Soccer Coaches Association All-State, uh, recognition, and she will be attending the banquet at the Pines Manor also. We had a very strong season. Girls played hard, and, uh, I, I'm glad they had an opportunity to be recognized tonight. Thank you to everyone who's here. Thank you, ladies.
Congratulations on the season, Coach, and, and congratulations, girls, on a wonderful season, and thank you for coming tonight and letting us honor you.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
It's our honor, so thank you.
Okay, as you can imagine, a lot of our girls that just were up on stage just came back from either a basketball scrimmage at North Brunswick, and some of them just finished with winter track, so like our band, we are very multitasking in our, in our athletics. Next, I'm gonna do the, uh, boys cross-country team. Unfortunately, Coach Allen can't be here tonight, so I'll ask the boys to come up on stage. As they're coming up, just a, a little bit about what they did, they were the, uh, Central Jersey Group One sectional champions, and they were also the Group One champions. So this was a very prestigious awards for us as a Group One team. Okay, guys, when I call your name, just step forward. Eric Schleif, Brady Allen, Kai Engler, Art Croumans, Asher Greenbaum. Asher has his cheering section here. James Vashelli and Miles Born. I'd also like to recognize Eric, please step forward, Eric was the Central Jersey Group One sectional champion, congratulations. Thanks, guys. Okay, come on down. Next up, girls cross-country. I would like to introduce first Coach Kelly Hollerin, who is our Red Division Coach of the Year, GMC Coach of the Year, and probably, uh, everything else Coach of the Year, so Coach Hollerin, come on up, girls.
Okay. Uh, I want to start by thanking you for having the girls here tonight. Um, it means a lot to us to be recognized for the incredible season that they were able to put together. We have an extremely dedicated group of young women here who started back in early July, putting in many, many miles to make this season, uh, the success that it was, which was very successful. Um, I'll start off by, uh, saying their names individually, and then I'll get into season highlights quickly, um, to start, so step forward, girls, when I say your name. Sabrina Candell, Amber Murray, Caitlin Schre, Ella Anderson, Sally Kelton, Gianna Hernandez. Thanks, girls. Um, so just to, before I name the championships that they have won this year, I know that that's why they're here, to be honored tonight, but behind those championships is so many miles, so much courage that these girls have within them, that they show every weekend on that starting line, when that gun goes off, they have to, um, put their bodies through a lot, and week in and week out, they do it, and they should, they make me incredibly proud and hopefully our entire community. The highlights that I will recognize tonight for the team are GMC Red Division Champions, the GMC Champions, the Central Jersey Group One sectional Champions, and the State Group One Champions. They have also, yep. They were also recently named the GMC Team of the Year, not really a surprise, but they are the Team of the Year for the GMC. Um, we have some individual highlights as well. Sabrina Candell, you can step forward. Sabrina was named, um, All-Red Division, and yes, that, it's her first year, great job, Sabrina. Caitlin Schre, she was named First Team All-GMC and Third Team Group One. Ella Anderson, First Team GMC and Third Team Group One. Sally Kelton, First Team All-GMC and Second Team Group One. And Gianna Hernandez, Gianna was the individual GMC Champion, the GMC Red Division Champion, she was named First Team All-GMC, First Team All-Group One, and she was named the GMC Runner of the Year. I'm incredibly proud of this group of young women, and, um, thank you for recognizing them tonight.
Great job, Coach.
Again, I'd like to thank you, and actually, if you watch these guys come off the stage, they probably were just coming in from the cold a little while ago, also looking wet, and came home and came right back to, uh, to be here tonight, so, uh, very dedicated group of young ladies. So we will thank you tonight for having us here, it's a great honor, it's, it's good to be here because that means we won a lot, so we hope to be back in the, in the, uh, winter season and in the spring, so thank you very much.
Thank you so much for coming tonight, all of our athletes. Tremendous, tremendous achievements, and, um, you know, when you say this is an extraordinary, um, girls cross-country team, you're really saying something because of our, our deep history and culture of having wonderful track teams in general, all our sports teams, but specifically the women's cross-country team, uh, has a tremendous history, and, and you've done nothing but amplified and augmented, it's just a wonderful season, so thank you all, and thank you for letting us honor you by coming tonight. Thank you very much. Yeah, we're, we're gonna take just a couple-minute break to let everyone who'd like to leave, um, go ahead and leave, we have a very excited program coming up, but, um, whoever'd like to go, uh, we'll give you a few minutes to do that, thank you. So, um, we'll, uh, pick the meeting up again, again now, for those of you at home, you get to watch us, but you didn't see the exodus. Uh, the auditorium was pretty much filled, and now it is pretty much, well, not quite empty, but, uh, as close to empty as, uh, as can be without being empty, so, um,
Huge crowd.
We certainly appreciated everyone coming and letting us honor them, some really extraordinary achievements, um, in the, uh, in the fall, and, and, uh, very pleased that they could come. Okay, uh, the meeting is now open to the public for any topic. Seeing none, we will move, we have a presentation, Dr. Caputo?
Yeah, very brief presentation, um, as required for every district, a six-month update on the Safe Return to School Road Forward. As you remember, um, the state required districts, as part of the return after the spring shutdown in 2020, to update their community with any changes to the plan, and of course, in 2020 and in 2021 and 22, we had lots of updates as we progressed from the initial start of the pandemic through the worst of it and sort of out of it. Um, the update for, for December is no, there's no changes from the June update. We continue to monitor cases, our nurses are aware of absent reasons, we still have, um, um, masks available to students or staff if they need it, we have, uh, hand sanitizer, um, and certainly, we, you know, we suggest you talk to your doctor or visit Rite Aid or Boits and, and get your vaccines, um, and we continue to monitor, uh, any, any unusual cases, whether they respiratory cases or other, to keep our students and staff safe. So that's the update. The Safe Return Plan, as always, can be found on the website. Ms. Aliavich, thank you for posting that, um, and we'll do it again in six months.
Thank you, Dr. Caputo. Any questions from the board, Dr. Caputo on, on that? I just mentioned Dr. Caputo, when I saw it on the agenda, I said, "How long have we been returning?" Is this, uh, is this requirement in the, in the, I guess it's not a law, it would be a
Like an action, whatever.
An action, is there a timeline on this, or, you know, in 2060, you'll still be here giving the, uh, the back to, that's, you know, returning, uh, anyway, thank you, thank you for the, uh, update. Um, next item is the president's report. This evening, I, I think it's appropriate, since it's December and our last meeting of the year, to talk a little bit about, uh, both looking backward at, at some, uh, wonderful work and achievement, and also looking forward at the, uh, at the year to come and the years to come in the future, and, um, we, we have one, uh, board member who will be, uh, leaving the board at the end of the year, and, um, just wanted to talk a, a second about Michelle Cook. Michelle, this is the end of your sixth year on the board. You, you finished your six-year sentence, you know, been, been released on good behavior. Michelle, amongst other things, has been the Chair of Policy for the last number of years, which, uh, anybody who's been on that committee or maybe even just sees, sees from the back, it sounds very anodyne, but it touches on really what the board does. Uh, the board is a policy-setting body. Uh, we don't administer the schools, we don't, you know, we, we don't, you know, write curriculum, we don't interview, you know, staff. What we do is we, we are in charge of policy, and that policy then gets interpreted by the administration through regulation and, and how they actually administer the schools, so the Chair of Policy, you know, I think people think about it as being dry, but it's really the, the heart and center of all board action, and really, um, all, all board power, if you will, of what, what can we do? Public always wonders, you know, what does the board do? You know, you guys say you can't do this, you can't do that, you can't do this, you can't do that, what do you do? Well, setting policy is one of the key components of what the board actually does, and amongst other things, Michelle is also on, been on, um, construction, and, um, I'm sure, you know, I don't remember all the committees you've been on, but those really stand out, obviously, we're in the middle midst of construction, she's been a leading voice in the referendum process and on the construction committee, and, and with her policy work, and just her general, um, hard work, um, if I might say, good demeanor, um, always make some, you know, board meetings can be especially enclosed when we deal with some, some contentious issues, the, uh, the, the good nature and goodwill of those involved is always very important, and, uh, no one brought more goodwill and more good intentions than Michelle, and I want to congratulate you on your six years, and I want to present you with a, a present from the, from the school district, so.
Maybe you want to open and show us?
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
So Michelle, as you, as you're opening your, your gift for us, if, if I might, Mr. Lifthing?
Please.
Just a, certainly the superintendent doesn't evaluate, um, the, the board members, in fact, it's the opposite, you evaluate me, but if I were to evaluate your, your time on the board, I just, the, your growth has just been incredible, uh, to being a leader, to being a new board member who wants to serve, and that's noble in itself, uh, and obviously getting elected twice, but then becoming a leader, a voice on the board, I just want to say personally, thank you, and your growth is like a case study that school boards should do, just an incredible rise for you and, and a really successful run on the board.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, Michelle.
There it is.
There it is, there's the blue apple.
So, I started to write a longer speech, and then I shortened it because we kept going on and on, um, and if you don't know anything, over six years, I'm not one for long speeches or unnecessary speaking, but I did just want to say, um, you know, it's been an honor working with all of you. I've known board members in other states and other towns, and it's been a pleasure to work with people who always have our kids in their interest, whether we agree on the decision or not, and we've seen some interesting things in my six years. I came on thinking, ooh, okay, construction, and then COVID, and all of it's fun, and then finally, construction, so it has definitely been an adventure. I jumped into education headfirst in 2018, running for the board and becoming a teacher, so I'm looking forward to watching these meetings from my couch, I'm not gonna lie, with that 5:00 AM alarm, um, but I'm also looking forward to following the progress of the district, both, you know, the construction and all of that, but also as an educator and taking inspiration from all of the great work that you guys do here in Matutian, and keep it up.
Well, thank you, Michelle, we appreciate it, and, um, and you know, at the end of, you know, often, you know, Dr. Caputo will announce retirement, we accept retirements, and we always say, I always say, "Good luck in your retirement." Not exactly retirement, you got a lot of work to do, but at least good luck in your retirement from the Board of Education, at least.
Thank you, guys, thank you so much.
And, um, and looking forward, um, Ms. Cook will be replaced by Ms. Nadia Cheedam, who will be a brand-new board member, and we're looking forward to that, starting in, in January. And for myself, this is the end of, of my presidency. For those of you who don't know, presidents of the board are elected by the board itself on a year-to-year basis, so although I have another year on the board, my presidency ends on December 31st, um, it'll be the end of my sixth individual yearly term as president, non-consecutive, but six, six years, and I have to say that, um, I've enjoyed all my years as president, all my years on the board, but I truly appreciate our current, the current makeup of our board at least as much, if not more, than the boards in the past, just the goodwill, and as Ms. Cook said, I have absolutely no doubt in every fiber of my being that every single board member, no matter what side of the issue they fall, fall on, only wants the best things for our children, our community, our parents, our staff. I know other, you know, I've been on the board a long time, and I've heard stories and talked to board members from other boards, and that isn't always the case. There are a lot of mixed motivations that people have, um, for why they might run for, for a Board of Education, um, but I have to say in Matutian now, and, and really for all my, my, is it really 14 years, so 14 and a half years on the board, I can honestly say that I've, I've never felt that any board member had any motivation other than the best interest of the students and the community, and, um, that, that's a gift, that's a gift to be able to work in such an environment and feel that we're all, if, maybe having, have different ideas of certain things, but we're all trying to row in the same direction, which is for the betterment of our, of our children and, and the community of Matutian, so I want to thank my fellow board members for the trust you gave me, electing me president this year, um, and, uh, so many, you know, I get to run these meetings, but the work is all being done by the other board members, really, uh, our, our committees do a tremendous amount of work, our, our chairs are wonderful, and, um, you know, they give the committee reports, and, and it sounds like, well, but they're doing this, they're doing that, they're really doing a tremendous amount of work, and, uh, that's where the work of the board is done, and I want to thank them and all of, all the board members for all the work they've done, and I look forward to seeing what the board will do next year, so, thank you all, and I appreciate it. Superintendent's report.
Just a brief report, but I think an exciting one. Uh, on a night of the showcase of success, we're honoring our champions, uh, I was very fortunate enough to spend this afternoon, part of this afternoon, down in Trenton, um, uh, at an awards program where nine entities from across the state, a school, a nonprofit, an activist group, a student, nine different entities across the state were honored for their work in, um, in, in protecting the environment, so it was the Department of, Department of Environmental Protection and the Governor's Office, uh, and their awards assemble, uh, awards program today, and Matutian Public Schools was one of the nine honorees honored for their work in the climate category, so I was very fortunate to be able to attend with our supervisor of math and science, Kate Lemmerick, with our middle school, um, our teacher and environmental club advisor, Chrissy Kremer, and our high school environmental science teacher and environmental club advisor, Yoko Kato, and also with high school senior, Rowan Brown, and it was, it was an honor to be recognized. The Deputy Commissioner of the, um, of the Department of Environmental Protection, uh, gave us this award today, it's right here, and this is like the Stanley Cup, this will spend, you know, a, a bit of time at each of our four schools, because we are So this nice trophy here, which is inscribed with 2024 Climate, Matutin Public Schools on the back, and on the front, New Jersey Governor's Environmental Excellence Award, recognizing the Matutin Public Schools for their work around environmental excellence, specifically in the climate category. So really proud, and I knew the board would be proud, I wanted to bring this tonight. And again, this will spend some time at each of our schools, because that's really where the work takes place. So, thank you.
Wonderful. Congratulations. I was off. Congratulations, Dr. Kaputo, and to everyone in the district who contributed to the award. It's wonderful. Somewhat not surprising, but was it expected, or just...
So we had found out about six weeks ago, because they told us who would be in the picture, and who was coming to the ceremony, and how many, and, but not to share anything until today. There'll be a press release that comes out from the Governor's Office or the Department of Environmental Protection, and we'll certainly plaster that. Right before the meeting, I did post a photo of myself, Ms. Limerick, Ms. Kato, Ms. Kremer, and Rowan on Blue Sky and Twitter. But there'll be a press release, and we'll certainly advertise the heck out of that when they release it.
Just a wonderful job. And I know so many people in the district have contributed to the effort, the climate effort, the green effort. There's a, I believe there's a committee of teachers. There's a lot of, a lot of effort has gone into it, and a lot of years. I remember going back a long time, the initial efforts in anti-idling, and I remember discussions years ago, and certainly not the culmination, but certainly an acknowledgement of all the works that's been done. It's a wonderful thing, so congratulations. One other thing, just backtracking, I did mention that my presidency ends on December 31st. The board will reorganize on January 7th.
7th, Tuesday.
Tuesday, January 7th, at 8:00. Our new board member will be sworn in. And for those who'd be interested, Mr. Harvier will be leading the meeting. So you need to tune in for that. It's always the most exciting meeting of the year.
Were we considering 7:00 for that meeting, or...
We talked about it. Dr. Kaputo had asked me in the past if we started at 7:00. I didn't remember that, did we, though?
We've done both in the past.
We've done both in the past. I feel like some people couldn't make it or something at 7:00 more recently.
I mean, in the end, he asked me, I think we settled on 8:00. But if the board would prefer, I mean, I'm open to changing it. I just, we, all our meetings are at 8:00. It's not a particularly long meeting typically.
No, it came up last, last night a little bit in one of the committee meetings. There, we might have an after meeting. We might have a...
That is true.
I think that was maybe part of the thought.
Well, but we already, did we already set the after meeting? I mean...
Did we send out the information for that yet, or not yet? No, we didn't, it didn't go out yet, right? No. So we did some, like, initial contacts, but we haven't announced that meeting.
Okay. Is it, is it the pleasure of the board to start that meeting at 7:00?
I won't be here.
Well, that's, at all, you can't make 7:00?
I won't be here at all.
Okay, so we don't need to worry about you now.
But I'm usually the proponent for 8:00.
Right, and that might have been why we did the 8:00 in the past, but he said last night that he wasn't going to be...
Is there anybody else who, I mean, would we prefer 7:00? I have, I have no issue. Is 7:00 better for everyone? Okay, so we will set that meeting at 7:00. And the new president and officers can decide maybe to go forward with 7:00, and Eric will just be late.
No.
But anyway, so that, so I guess that's the determination of the board. We will have a 7:00 meeting on January 7th. Seven, at, 7:00 on the 7th. And at that point, we will reorganize the board, have our election of new leadership, and of course swearing in our new board member. And there'll be a lot of approvals of various service providers and other things. So, okay, just wanted to make that known, that that reorganization meeting will be 7:00 on the 7th of January. Okay, we will move to committee reports. Ms. Cook, policy.
Yes. So we have technically not met since the last board meeting, but we are meeting next week with our big calendar discussion. So I just wanted to let everyone know that, and just let everyone know, you know, our goal is always to get it to the full board by the second meeting in January. We're still on that track. It will be my last hour of board work next week to try to get a calendar to everybody. And I just wanted to, I know I've been asked a lot of questions about, "Will it be late? Will it be on time?" So I just wanted to put it out there that at this time, it is our goal to begin at what we call the quote-unquote "normal" time, right after Labor Day. That is always subject to change, but at this point in time, the assumption is that we should be beginning directly after Labor Day. And we'll keep everybody posted as construction continues.
Wonderful. Thank you, Ms. Cook. Mr. Dershowitz, your curriculum.
Thank you. Curriculum hasn't met, so I'll have a report for our next meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Glassberg, construction.
Construction met last night. It was open to the public. We received an update from Greyhawk, our construction management company, and Spiegel, our architecture firm. The high school cafeteria addition has steel set in place. Masonry has started. In the gym, the pier foundation needed some approvals, which caused a delay. That work has been completed, the pier foundation work. There's been some underground work taking place as well. Steel should arrive in the next couple of weeks. HVAC is set to arrive in January, and they'll start a couple of rooms at a time, putting in that new equipment. Campbell cafeteria addition is very far along. The flooring, ceilings, those things are in. Inside HVAC renovations should also be happening a couple of rooms at a time soon. Edgar, the addition is continuing well. The brick veneer is going, coming in a couple of weeks. The roof of the new portion is on, rough electrical's going in. Most unit ventilators were, have been put in. The heating works in those. The air will come on when the switchgear is installed. At Moss, the steel is pretty much complete there. The concrete floor decks are installed. Masonry has started. The underground water retention system is in. Retaining wall is complete on the Voorhees, and most of the hunt side and the bounty side is coming next. And much of the HVAC is in in the existing spaces, I think. We also had some comments from the public related to playground and field at Campbell, questions about grade realignment, busing, and the lighting at Moss. In our closed session, we discussed some potential change orders that we're waiting for the numbers on, that relate to windows and bathrooms primarily. And we discussed one of our contractors, the construction company, and the progress that they were making. So just two more things, or one more thing to piggyback off of what Michelle said. So we hope to have that calendar sometime later in January. Decision about full-day kindergarten made in February, and busing decisions hopefully made around March in terms of what we would be doing there. Grade align, realignment could happen later on, depending upon the progress. We'll just continue to update you as frequently as we can, both on our website, matutinschools.org, as well as at these meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glassberg. Dr. Johnson-Marcus?
I'm so enraptured by the Construction Committee update that I lost my thoughts.
He's hypnotizing.
Even though I actually attended.
He's hypnotizing.
Indeed. I was like, "Oh, my gosh, so much progress. That's amazing." All right, apologies, folks. I just have one quick update. Today is actually Human Rights Day. So the Human Relations Commission of Matutin would like to remind folks that it is Human Rights Day. It commemorates the anniversary of one of the world's most groundbreaking global pledges, the Universal Declaration of Human Rights. This landmark document enshrines the inalienable rights that everyone is entitled to as a human being, regardless of race, color, religion, sex, language, political or other opinion, national or social origin, property, birth, or other status. And this year's theme happens to be "Our Rights, Our Future Right Now." So just wanted to give folks a chance to think about the Universal Declaration of Human Rights, and maybe go look it up and learn a little bit more about it as well. That's all for me today.
Well, thank you. Ms. Colleen, extracurricular?
Yeah, extracurricular met last night. It was a quick meeting, but we have a couple of approvals on the agenda tonight for everyone to take a look at. We've got some volunteer coaches that we're approving, volunteer club advisor. There was a change in the advisor for the English Honor Society that we talked about, and then two additional event staff that we're approving tonight. So important approvals, but I just wanted to bring that to raise attention. That's what we discussed, and that was, that was the whole meeting.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Spigner, equity?
Equity committee has not met since the last board meeting, but we, depending on agenda items, will be meeting next Tuesday, December 17.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. Mr. Suss, finance?
Yes, finance met last night after construction. We talked about busing. If we have, we talked about busing the various different scenarios. So if we do not do grade realignment and full-day K only, nothing will change for the busing. We'll still have busing at Campbell and Edgar, but not for Moss. If we do a complete reorganization, it is highly likely we'll do busing K through 8. We talked about some other issues with busing, magnet school busing, some issues with payments for busing. We talked about a couple of other circumstances which are causing transportation costs to go up. We talked about the lighting project at MHS, actually one of the budget transfers I had a question on. Mr. Harvier so kindly answered. Is for money for, for those that read the budget transfers, one of them is for money for the lights, plus some other work that's being done here, including the high hats that you see in the back, among other things. We talked about bid specs for furniture. This is part of the referendum, so it's, you know, the money's accounted for, but we are sending out the specs for furniture for the new spaces. For the board, we did get our auditors, did send us a letter. Audit coming soon, and of course, we'll get to hear from the auditors, read the audit, et cetera. And that's pretty much it.
Thank you, Mr. Suss. Ms. Shrestha, do you have a report? We missed you at the last meeting.
I know. I was really sad that I couldn't attend, but I'm here today, so. Just wanted to say, good evening, everyone. We could just get started into talking about the elementary school. The holiday bizarr is happening, and it's bringing joy to students and staff alike. There is excitement about the possibility of the fifth grade joining the school. My cousin was talking about how she's really excited about that. And at the middle school, students showed incredible generosity during the Adopt a Family fundraiser, raising over $3,000. I think that's absolutely amazing. And after-school orchestra and band members are teaming up to go caroling next week, spreading holiday cheer throughout the community. Sounds really fun. Finally, at the high school, students are busy with preparations for teams like the mock trial or consumer bowl competitions. And recently, there's been the special event schedule, and we've actually been liking it, just to let you guys know. And to top it off, the snowball dance was a great success. I talked to a couple of people across grades that went, and we all had a lot of fun, so. And just to wrap it up, it's clear that holiday spirit is alive and well across our schools, and with the temperatures suddenly turning cold, like out of nowhere, it's perfect time to enjoy the warmth and joy of these traditions. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for your report. Go ahead, Dr. Cook.
Ms. Shrestha, do you have any college updates for us?
Um, not yet. Not yet.
All right, you'll keep us informed.
I will keep you guys posted.
Well, thank you. Thank you for your report. Go ahead.
No pressure, Dr. You can tell us if you want.
I will.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments on any of the reports from the board? Seeing none, we will move on. Is there any old business from the board? Is there any new business from the board? If not, I'd like to move the approval of the following minutes of the Board of Education: November 12, 2024, Special Business Meeting 1; November 12, 2024, Special Business Meeting 2; November 12, 2024, Board Meeting; November 26, 2024, Special Business Meeting 1; November 26, 2024, Special Business Meeting 2; November 26, 2024, Board Meeting. Is there a second? Dr. Johnson-Marcus, are there any comments or questions on those minutes? I have a question. I saw something about why we're, why we're actually voting again. Did we not have the appropriate quorum the last time?
Yeah, last time, we had four people vote to approve the minutes.
Right.
But four abstentions.
So there was no majority.
It was 4-0.
And four.
You need an absolute majority of the board to approve minutes?
We weren't exactly sure, so we put it on, just to be sure.
We're not sure we're just doing it again? Okay. All right, I appreciate it.
So do we vote abstain for the one that we've not added?
Yeah, but the same people are probably going to have to abstain.
Well, there'll be, there's someone here that wasn't there.
Oh, that's true. That's true.
And we're not sure about that, but if it happens again, we'll check with our attorney.
Okay.
Just a reminder for the board, in terms of any votes, you know this, but just because you weren't at a meeting doesn't necessarily mean you have to abstain. You may choose to abstain, but you don't have to abstain if you've read the minutes, if you've, you know, answered questions.
Right, right.
But I'm not...
Just to amplify, just to amplify what Dr. Kaputo said, I was taught in NJ SBA training that if you have familiarized yourself with the meeting, which usually would, would mean watching the tape, watching the recording. We record every board, every board meeting is recorded and is on the district website. So board members can review it, review the information, and then if they feel comfortable that they've, that they've learned everything that went on, they can, they can vote on the minutes, whether or not they were here, so.
And before, if we do have that same four votes to approve that November 12, we'll just confer with our attorney. We figured not to spend money on the attorney, we would just put it on again and see what happens tonight with the, with the full complement of board members.
Makes sense.
So we're excited to see what happens tonight.
Any other, we have a motion in a second. Are there any other comments or questions on the minutes, or corrections? Seeing none, walk up, please.
Mr. Bott?
Yes.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Dershowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Glassberg?
I, yes.
Dr. Johnson-Marcus?
Yes.
Ms. Colleen?
Yes.
Mr. Lifton?
Yes.
Dr. Spigner?
Yes.
Mr. Suss?
I'll abstain on November 12, all three, and yes on the 26th.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And the motion carries.
Wonderful.
I didn't watch, I didn't watch the video.
No, it's okay.
Even in 3X.
We took the suspense out of it. It was good stuff there. Thank you, Mr. Suss.
At this point, I'd like to open the meeting to the public for any topic. Seeing none, we'll close that section and move to the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools. Oftentimes, it may appear to members of our audience that the Board of Education takes action with very little comment, and in many cases, unanimous vote. Before a matter is placed on the agenda at a public meeting, the administration has thoroughly reviewed the matter with the Superintendent of Schools. If the superintendent is satisfied that the matter is ready to be presented to the Board of Education, it is then referred to the appropriate board committee. The members of the board committee work with the administration and the superintendent to assure that the members fully understand the matter. When the committee is satisfied with the matter, it is presented to the Board of Education for discussion before any final action is taken. Only then is it placed on the agenda for action at a public meeting. I'd like to move the personnel items, A1 through 14. Is there a second? Ms. Cook, are there any comments or questions on those items? Seeing none, walk up, please.
Mr. Bott?
Yes.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Dershowitz.
Yes.
Mr. Glassberg.
I, yes.
Dr. Johnson-Marcus.
Yes.
Ms. Colleen.
Yes.
Mr. Lifton.
Yes.
Dr. Spigner.
Yes.
Mr. Suss.
I'll abstain on November 12th, all three, and yes on the 26th.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And the motion carries.
Wonderful.
I didn't watch, I didn't watch the video.
No, it's okay.
Even in 3X.
We took the suspense out of it. It was good stuff there. Thank you, Mr. Suss.
At this point, I'd like to open the meeting to the public for any topic. Seeing none, we'll close that section and move to the recommendation of the superintendent of schools. Oftentimes, it may appear to members of our audience that the Board of Education takes action with very little comment and in many cases unanimous vote. Before a matter is placed on the agenda at a public meeting, the administration has thoroughly reviewed the matter with the superintendent of schools. If the superintendent is satisfied that the matter is ready to be presented to the Board of Education, it is then referred to the appropriate board committee. The members of the board committee work with the administration and the superintendent to assure that the members fully understand the matter. When the committee is satisfied with the matter, it is presented to the Board of Education for discussion before any final action is taken. Only then is it placed on the agenda for action at a public meeting. I'd like to move the personnel items, A1 through 14. Is there a second? Ms. Cook, are there any comments or questions on those items? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Bott.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Dershowitz.
Yes.
Mr. Glassberg.
Yes.
Dr. Johnson-Marcus.
Yes.
Ms. Colleen.
Yes.
Mr. Lifton.
I abstain on 8, but yes on the rest.
Thank you very much. Dr. Spigner.
Yes.
Mr. Suss.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next are the finance items. Mr. Suss.
I'd like to move items B1 through B7, as listed on the agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second? Dr. Spigner, are there any comments or questions on those items? Mr. Suss.
Just one, just one comment. B7 is actually some change orders, not different from what Mr. Glassberg was talking about. They were waiting for some prices on some other things, but these are actually some change orders.
Thank you. Are there comments or questions on these items? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Bott.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Dershowitz.
Yes.
Mr. Glassberg.
Yes.
Dr. Johnson-Marcus.
Yes.
Ms. Colleen.
Yes.
Mr. Lifton.
Yes.
Dr. Spigner.
Yes.
Mr. Suss.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Ms. Cook, policy.
Yes, I'd like to move item C1, as listed on the agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second? You see, if we don't second your motion, I don't think we can end the meeting, and then you'll be stuck on the board forever. It's like a Twilight Zone episode.
Nice job, nice job, Chris.
Chris messed up the joke, but that's okay.
I was the one that called the idea cute. Brain fart, sorry.
Now, Ms. Cook, you probably think that was my idea, but I have to say, it was Mr. Glassberg from the beginning. I wish I had thought about it, but it was Mr. Glassberg.
So, the policy item was seconded by Mr. Dershowitz.
Nice job, Mr. Dershowitz.
Getting late.
Any comments or questions on that item? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Bott.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Dershowitz.
Yes.
Mr. Glassberg.
Yes.
Dr. Johnson-Marcus.
Yes.
Ms. Colleen.
Yes.
Mr. Lifton.
Yes.
Dr. Spigner.
Yes.
Mr. Suss.